Good evening, my name is Keith Romano, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Inland Wetlands Commission meeting for the town of Monroe. It is, um, what is it today, 13th?
13th, October 13th.
2021, the time is 7:05 PM. I take a roll call, the members of the commission and staff present during tonight's meeting. Please answer here, present, starting myself, Keith Romano. Lois Spencer is our vice chair and secretary.
Yeah.
Jim Stewart will not be with us tonight. Clark Gingers.
Here.
Ross Mastaraco.
Here.
BJ Hall.
Here.
Donna Szysinski is our office manager.
Here.
Terrence Stroud, reporting secretary.
Here.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Lord, which stands nation.
Under God.
In the vision. The beginning and justice.
Alright, before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. Inland Wetlands' mission statement, the objective and purpose of the Inland Wetlands Commission is to provide for the overall protection, preservation, inland wetlands and water courses within the town of Monroe. Meeting procedure, please note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law, Public Act 21-1. As such, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title if applicable at the outset of each occasion that such person is speaking. All votes taken during, which any member of this body or participation remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is in the air. The chat features will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. In normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for public hearings is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission during which, and after which, the commission will be asking the participant questions. I'd like to ask the applicants to keep the presentation as concise as possible. The commission will then review town, staff, and other independent comments. The meeting will then be open for public comment. I will ask that all comments be made to the chair or commission. After any and all comments pro and opposition of a general nature are made, the applicant will be given the opportunity to respond. Please keep comments or questions direct. And a timeline of three minutes may be imposed. Not necessarily the applicant response, but generally their message should do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions, material entered in as evidence or testimony during the response. Please keep all comments pro and con specific to inland wetlands related matters. Other applications that do not involve a public hearing will follow a similar format, with the exception that there will be no public comment allowed. Meeting follows a published agenda unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I do not have any.
Great, okay. So, at this point, I'll open the meeting to general public participation. If anybody has anything to speak to the commission about of any nature, general nature, as long as it's not something that's pending in front of us right now or in the near future. Go ahead, you could come up. Say your name and...
My name is Brian Carey, I'm with Land Tech, Westport, Connecticut. I was advised to come here tonight with staff because I had a couple preliminary design questions regarding a future application for a resident that we're working for at 251 Old Zor Road. We were retained about a month ago. The resident is looking to install a barn on his property and put a culvert through an existing intermittent water course. Based on the limited means of the resident, we didn't want to really go down a design path because the engineering required to do the drainage analysis and hydrology analysis. So we were kind of comfortable and had a pre-application type meeting with staff. The staff I met with at the counter about two weeks ago, she advised me that at the current time, this would be something that would be, could be brought up at the public comment session. So at this point, I just put together some preliminary drawings. We've had the site flagged for wetlands, we've had an H2 survey done, and I've just done some rough sketches. Currently, the water course in the area that we're looking to do the crossing is about three to five feet wide. We're proposing possibly putting in a pipe culvert with crush down and end walls. We didn't want to start going down that road because it is what we would deem a significant impact activity because there is being filled, placed, and wellered into the water course. And we wanted to talk about mitigation efforts and things like that. I understand this is a bit unusual about putting a carpentry for the course. But again, like I said, it's a residential homeowner, you know, normally would develop multiple feasible and prudent alternatives, which we will as part of the process. I'll show you that, how we came to the fact that the culvert crossing is in the best interest of the resident and we could be protective of the wells. We just didn't want to go down that whole trip path and have something. And we got in front of the commission or even the staff and said, that's not something that would or could be permitted in the future.
So, do you have map copies?
So, my question is, public participation is something that is not going to, you know, come, you know, come in front of us. So, so...
Always not. Well, he's looking...
If it's not on our dockets now, we're not going to be on the docket in the near future. So this is, sounds like a, like a, like a subcommittee kind of thing like P&amp;Z does. Like he wants to have an open discussion, how we want us to act, but I feel like that should have been taken care of as staff, no?
We've had informal discussions before.
No, so this is the problem. They are, the resident wants to put accessory structures on his property, but they have to cross a water course.
Right.
And there was filling. And so, other than giving them, saying that they're going to need a full inland wetland application, they were also looking for guidance as to what the commission felt were good, was it the bridge, the water crossing?
Cross the water, right.
Yeah, how, how the commission likes to see that. We're looking to get a little bit of guidance so that they can prepare an application that is more to the commission's liking or fits the requirements that would...
Okay, so I understand that.
You have nothing in office.
I understand that, but that's like asking to have like an engineering brainstorm with the commission. We're not all necessarily like engineers, understand the differences. So I feel like previously, historically, something like this, which is, which is an impact, I mean, you're talking about crossing through my lands and...
No denying that.
Right, so...
So the specific information that you're trying to glean is what from the commission?
So, I, I, I'll just pull out my resume for a minute, but I used to be the director of conservation in Stratford and then formerly Fairfield. This is kind of putting the cart before the horse. I understand that, you know, there is some staff changes going on in Monroe right now. Normally, we would bring these types of design considerations to staff and kind of get a cursory review where they could work as kind of a stopgap between, you know, the agency and the, and the office. Just, you know, I know no one can sit here and say, yeah, we're going to approve this with a couple sketches on the pieces of paper, but, but there is a significant cost to the homeowner for us to run hydraulic models and things like that and to try to put together the application prior to bringing it to the commission. If it gets denied, it gets denied, but, or, you know, approved. Normally, we would come in with some types of alternatives and say, this one's a non-starter. This one is, you know, this one we feel better about, we're going to offer mitigation for this. It's kind of like a path where, we call it a pre-application meeting.
Let me ask you, let me ask you a question, so, or ask a question to both. Has Scott been, does Scott have any discussion on this? Because I think like, we could say to him, put a pipe, whatever, and, but, he may say, you know, residential property, you know, back area, accessory structure, you know. I feel like when we're dealing something like that, that he's going to have, you know, something to say about it.
Right.
As far as like the integrity of it or how much...
So would you like to refer this to the town engineer?
I think that's a safe bet right now. I mean, I don't think that we're going to like expect to see like, you know, industrial park type of crossing, you know, you know, with, with a, you know, box culvert and H20 loading, stuff like that, it's private property. So I think as far as, as obviously as I'm concerned, is that it could be a scaled down, like this is, serves the purpose, but, you know, the other thing is, I don't think we could allow like to just say, you know, just put whatever size pipe. I feel like there's got to be some kind of data behind the, you know, the size, some kind of collection of something that, that says, you know, we're not going to cause any issues down the line or up the line, you know, whatever the course may be.
So that's kind of where I was hoping to go with it, was that, you know, whether it be a box culvert or just a closed culvert with crush down, it's an intermittent water course, right?
I think, I think what I'm getting at is that, I think you should talk to the town engineer and then let him give us some kind of report back on it. And then he'll also, you know, and then we can have this discussion again, but it's hard, it's hard to say, it's hard for us to say to a professional engineer, you know, give us, you know, give us your, like, you know, your 70% effort when all the other engineers here today, you know, have to, you know, go by us, you know, a standard.
I agree 100%.
So...
Right, I just was not honestly sure, Joe's in office, I don't read...
It also probably would have helped, yep, it probably would have helped too if the, if the property owner was here too, you know, in part of the discussion. And having, you know, because, again, you're a professional engineer, work for a big firm. You know, you're coming here saying, you know, what kind of leniency we can get without even an application here, and we're like, you know, a commission to help the people.
Right.
And property owners, so, just a little bit awkward. I think, start with the town engineer.
So, I apologize.
No, no, not at all.
I really didn't...
Look, it's totally legit, this is what we're here for, and I think it's kind of like a little bit pushing the, now, I don't, we've had this discussion about, you know, subcommittee type of things for some of the bigger things that are happening in town. So it's not unheard of, the planning and zoning does it here as well. So...
I'm not sure residential, so it's a smaller scale.
Smaller scale, and we've had homeowners come to us with, you know, a lot, most of the time remediation stuff that, you know, they were just kind of shocked because they were selling the house and a GAS thing showed up and, but, you know, this is kind of a new constru-, more on the new construction side of it. But that's just, you know, that's my, my feelings on it and...
So if you want to...
I'll call the town engineer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Touch me if you need him.
And he could just say, he could report back to us and say, you know, I've looked at this map, there's no flood issues, this or that, you know, and, and he could even just guide you on, you know, applica-, just an application.
Oh, we're coming in with a full application.
Right, so, so he may say, he's kind of like the one that in the past, if there was something that was a kind of a concern, or he would pick up on something like, this just doesn't jive with me. So if you get his blessing on it, now, if he says to you, you know, you think it's, like it's an extreme step, you know, you don't have to, you don't have to follow that. If you want something that you think is obnoxious, you could, you can design something that you feel, you know, works within regulation or whatever, and present it to us, and that's fine as well.
What was the address of the...
Brian Carey, it's 251 Old Zor Road.
Of 250?
So we're just, we were hired back in, in July, and there's just been a gap between, you know, getting this off the ground.
Right.
So, I, I, I do agree, this is putting the cart before the horse.
Right.
So I appreciate the feedback.
Oh.
Thank you, so yeah, if you give us a call in the morning.
Yep, no problem.
You can find my number right on the website.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. Okay, so now we're on to subdivision report. I mean, there's nobody else in the public that need to speak in a general nature? Okay. Subdivision report recommendation to P&amp;Z, none. Regular meetings, nothing. Public hearing, IWC 2021-09, 1271 Road Turpike, multi-district development and associate site improvements.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Larry Edwards, professional engineer. Offices 227 Stephanie Road in Easton.
I am trying to figure that out.
Okay, basically since our last time here, there was some comments from the commission that they wanted us to look at and to address, and we were also waiting for the town engineer to do his final review. Since then, as of today, I believe, the town engineer signed off on all of his comments that were set with him, and obviously we made some changes to, to address his comments from the first time around, and those are the plans you now have. Plus, there was a number of items that came up at the September 22 public hearing, and one of them, I'm going to just go through the items that we defined and back to you and written for you, but Commissioner Stewart requested that we look at moving the road as we come in, in close to this, this wetland in, in the isolated, driveway next to the isolated wetland. And he requested that we try to move that away, which we did. We moved it approximately 10 feet farther away from the wetland to give a little more of a buffer to that. He also requested a cross-section of the proposed driveway, and we gave one, that was that, of the crossing of the water course, the brook, up near the center, beginning of the road, which is, everyone's with me. This is a crossing, we gave a cross-section of that driveway crossing, which was basically replacing the existing pipe that was there with a new culvert that would meet the, the town requirements in terms of capacity. There was, the third item concerned, again, that isolated wetland located the central part of the property, and there was comments, we originally had proposed one of the buildings to direct the roof runoff into wetlands because it's concerned about the, how much of the water we were going to be intercepting with the construction uphill on the site. And we basically have now taken two of the buildings, but we also included a water budget for that wetland, which we put it on the drainage map, that's where it is. If you go over to the side over here, I made up a septic little drainage watershed map for that wetland. And basically, I broke it down and looked at the impact and the amount of water that's coming in there, and just very quickly, the total drainage area for that wetland is approximately 4.8 acres. We are proposing to divert approximately 8, 0.8 acres of that. So that will mean that we're losing that amount of water. And if you go through this whole, my analysis, I've gone into the amount of water that we're going to re-divert that in, total that now exists, and the other additional impact that will be to the wetlands is what runoff of groundwater is going to be introduced with the septic systems that are upscale, upstairs, up slope of the, the wetland. And that's a significant amount, and you know, the wetlands are maintaining the separation from, but the amount of water that will be entering the ground due to the septic systems more than makes up for what is being lost as a result of the diversion of that 0.8 acre. So, you know, we had 0.8 acres that we were diverting, we put back in the roof runoff from approximately 16,000, so about a quarter of that we put back in. And then if you take in the amount of groundwater that's going to be increased because of the effluent runoff, ethyl discharge, because that water doesn't come from well sources, that's coming from off-site because it is puff of water. So that is a direct in, you know, input into that water budget. So the net is, the water input is going to be approximately 8% more overall increase to that wetland area than presently exists. So, again, that was to provide you with analysis and a raw number of what, what the actual impact would be. So that, I think, answers that question. And the last item we had was the plantings, and basically I come back and took the deep list of native species and basically substituted in native species and all the plantings that we were proposing. So I think that was one of your comments. And I think that's it, that was what we had left, and I think we have basically addressed all of the outstanding items that were brought up to date.
Great, let me just ask the commissioners if they have any other questions, or any clarification, Commissioner Spence?
The only thing that I, we talked about briefly but haven't come up with any conclusion on is the language for the conservation easements. Unless Donna has something. Did you receive something that's...
I did, yeah.
Okay, oh, I wasn't aware.
And I'm sure that's going to be subject to change if...
Oh, I'm proud of you.
It always is.
Well, yeah, we did give one based on, on another project that the commission does.
Okay, alright.
Did you talk to us about that? I didn't actually...
Um, I just...
Because I, I mean, I can get you that, that's my question.
It's basically taken from a project that you had approved before, and we just took that verbiage and, and put it into it.
Okay, whatever this means, it's all legal ease.
Yeah, I know.
Do you want to see it, BJ? You want to see the conservation easement?
Oh, yeah, I would just... I'd care destiny.
Yeah, so I just, I just skimmed through it, and it's all legal ease.
Commissioner Gingras, any questions or clarifications?
Well, I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mastaraco?
No questions at this time.
Thank you, Christiane.
I read through the engineer comments, I looked at the letter and heard it, and I'm good.
Okay, good.
It is a public...
Anybody in the public like to speak in, in favor of this application? Anybody in the public want to speak in opposition to this application? Trying to see like, it's so small. Yeah, yeah.
This is Michelle Ultra.
Yeah, can you hold on for just a quick, quick second, please? We could make that...
Can you move her back? I can't. Oh, okay, she has to do it.
Okay.
There we go, I'm sorry, state your name, ma'am.
Michelle Ultra, and I'm in opposition of this plan.
Can you state your address, please? With the...
140 Old Zor Road.
And she had...
That's, that's, that's all, did you have anything else you wanted to say for a reason or anything? It's your time to speak.
No, I mean, I had gone to the planning and zoning meetings in 2015 when another, they wanted to extend, I believe it was the Highlands of Monroe, and they were, I was concerned that they were going to move into this property, and I was told at that time that they were looking at other pieces of property in Monroe, and yet, six years later, here we are, and it's right where I thought it was going to be. So, no, I'm, I'm just not very happy with this at all, that's all.
All right, thank you. Anybody else in the, in the public that would like to speak in opposition to this Anybody want to speak about this application in a general nature? Okay, are you guys...
The only thing left is, if there's any comments left that have not been resolved for Scott. There was just one in the, the end of number five, talking about a foundation sled, the trash rack and the head wall should be shown on the plan deal.
But he also says that we can do that at the planning and zoning.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that they...
It's on the record, yeah.
Okay. And then I do need to read the exhibits.
Okay.
Okay, so we read up until number 10, so I'm going to start with exhibit 11, which was a letter from Jason Edwards, it was response to the commissioner's concerns. Exhibit number 12 was the updated stormwater management plan by J. Edwards and Associates. Exhibit 13 was a updated 14-sheet plan set by J. Edwards and Associates. And exhibit 14 was the updated town engineer comments by Scott Schatzman. And there was bond, requested for this also. So I just make sure that's... It's on the... The bond estimate, the bond recommendation is $110,000. That's at the end of the entry. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Make a motion to deliberation?
I make a motion that we close the public hearing and move it to deliberation.
Motion by Christiane, second.
I'll second.
Motion by Christiane Spence, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passing, please. Move to deliberation. Close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. ITC 2021-12, 571 and 587 Pepper Street, closed construction of 6,814 square foot office, 26,000 square foot plus, warehouse building with associated site grading, driveway, parking, utility, facility underground, detention system, maybrook LLC applicant, solely engineering LLC representative.
So I believe Mary Blackburn is representing?
Oh, okay. Stay on, right here.
Right here. Can I share my screen?
Okay.
Good evening, members of the commission, for the record, my name's Kevin Solely, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. With me here is Mary Blackburn, one of our assistant project managers and landscape architects, and also Bill Kenny, our soil scientist is also on the line in case there are any questions for him. So we're here tonight to talk about, as Mary pulls up her screen and pulls up the presentation, we're here tonight to talk about a proposed industrial building at 571 and 587 Pepper Street, right here in Monroe. So while Mary pulls that up.
I can't, I can't, it's not allowing you to share that.
Yep, hold on, let me make you presenter. Did it do it, Mary? Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm just going to give a real brief intro and then hand it over to Mary to handle all the heavy lifting. But just to provide an introduction, so the site's located at 571 and 587 Pepper Street. The applicant is the same property owner who owns 500 Pepper Street, which is the recently completed Caruba facility. He's, they've been very happy with their new location now that it's actually opened and operational, and their businesses have just great, substantial, significant growth. They've now invested in another commercial property in town to create an industrial building to provide some additional storage for them and also create some additional industrial space. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Mary to kind of run through the high-level presentation, and I'll be here if anyone has any questions.
Hi, so, yeah, as Kevin said, my name's Mary Blackburn, I'm a registered landscape architect in the state of Connecticut, with Solely at 205 Main Street here in Monroe. So as Kevin said, you know, it's the same applicant that developed 500 Pepper Street, which you can see on the aerial here. Here's Main Street, this is the Tollgate Plaza building and, and the corner of Main Street and Pepper, and here is 587 and 571 Pepper Street, two adjacent properties right at the corner here. A little closer view, again, the plaza here, where they're doing all the construction on Pepper Street and the two properties. And as you can see, 587 Pepper Street is undeveloped, it's largely wetland, and 571 Pepper Street is developed with a single-family residential house, and there's a, an old remnants of a foundation in the back behind it. I believe through previous owners, about five or six years ago, there was a violation for some... there was a violation for some filling that had been resolved back in this area. Little aerial view. Can see the house, the old foundation, kind of the tree line. And the plaza here in Pepper Street. There we go. This is a proposed plan, as Kevin said, and same applicant that just moved into 500 Pepper Street. If you remember, you know, this was, went through inland wetlands and planning and zoning as well. This is all wetlands. So they've just moved in and actually they're looking for additional office space and warehouse space and saw the property down the street and are hoping to develop an additional office building in the front here. This would be a two-story, 6,800 square foot office building that they want to develop to look like a barn. And that would, you know, be the front of the property right along Pepper and a warehouse building, 22,000 square foot in the back here for storage. Majority of that screened by this nice barn office building in the front. And here's the grading and drainage plan. Let's see. Go to the utility plan. We have septic in the front of the property and water, gas and electric will come from Pepper Street along the kind of north side of the building here. And we have stormwater detention. We have underground detention system on the side. And then we have a basin in the back here for stormwater quality. We're reducing runoff for all storm events. And we've included treatment measures which meet the requirements of the 2004 Water Quality Manual. And then for the planting plan, we focused much of the planting along the wetlands here and in the basin area and in the front of the building. And provided some buffer along the side. All native species. And then for the lighting. Mostly building lights along this side and then two pole lights in the front. Liv levels at zero, put candles at the wetland. And then I'm just going to go over, because they're kind of, you know, same owner, an applicant of 500 Pepper Street and a little bit of a similar situation with the wetlands on the site. So it's kind of our thoughts for the basin. If you remember, in the back of the building here, they had a large stormwater quality basin, which I think has come in very nicely and grown in over the years. And this is kind of the similar way we're handling the site at 571 and 587. So it always helps to have some pictures to show what we're envisioning. Then go back to the site plan. So with that, I'd like to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Commissioner Spence, any questions? Commissioner Gingrich?
The driveway is not going to be, how far is the driveway from the wetlands designated? It's not, it's not touching, right?
No, there's no direct wetland impact. No.
Okay. It's, it's close.
It's probably 15, yes, 10 or 15 feet off of the.
Okay.
At the closure point, which is probably right here, next to the parking. This area is a little bit further.
Is there any way to move the parking a little bit farther away from the wetlands in that bottom corner?
Tagging down in here?
Yeah, because it's so close.
Yeah, it's something we can look at, you know, with the building setback. You know, we can't have parking in the, in the building setback. So that really was driving kind of where we located this, this.
Okay.
Parking area here.
One item, just to touch on the access, you know, because of Pepper Street, one of the things that we designed in trying to accommodate the proposed use is we did design, so we actually have two driveways. But the northerly or westerly most driveway closest to Route 25 is actually an entrance only. And then the driveway further east on Pepper Street or further south is the full movement driveway. And one of the elements that I wanted to make sure we touched on is, you know, in order for us to provide adequate site distance for vehicles exiting the site, we do and we have provided and shown our required intersection site distance. And within that area, there is some area within the existing wetlands where we would want to provide some very minimal tree clearing. And actually, the commission may remember who was part of the, who was, anyone was on the commission during the last application at 500 Pepper Street. We had a similar situation because our driveway was located on a curve on Cambridge Drive, similar to how this driveway is on a curve on Pepper. We did have to provide some very limited clearing within those wetland areas. And I think we actually have some pictures of that to kind of show that we were able to do that and conduct that activity without any significant impact to those, to those resources. So and just to kind of reiterate what Mary mentioned was that, you know, the site has been designed so it does not have any direct wetland impact. But obviously, as, you know, I think is evident, we are, you know, we are working within the regulated area, within the buffer. We did try to maintain as much of the existing tree buffer as we could. And we did incorporate some retaining walls and areas to further minimize that disruption and minimize the equipment into those areas on the best we could. But we do have, you know, based on what the, the owner's objectives were from a project standpoint, we are working in, within some of those areas, those regulated areas. But again, no direct wetland impact, just proposed as part of the application.
Is there going to be any runoff from those parking lots into the wetlands?
So all of our stormwater management system is designed to fully collect all stormwater from the building and the parking lot through a series of catch basins and sumps. That water is treated prior to either going into an underground detention system just to the northwest of the building in that location there. And then prior to discharge into a level spreader which goes into the wetlands. And then we have an above-ground detention system towards the rear of the, rear of the site with an above-ground basin in that location there. And again, we have provided water quality treatment prior to discharge into those systems. We do have one more discharge towards the front of the site along Pepper Street. Just based on the grades, we have catch basins located at the, kind of like the lowest points of our driveways to prevent runoff from leaving our site and going out to Pepper Street. So we're providing a collection of that, of that area and then routing that through another hydrodynamic separator to make sure that we can remove, you know, any suspended solids or sediment from that water. And then that will be discharged into the wetlands. You know, I will say, we did receive comments from Scott Schatzline, town engineer, which I believe were in your packet. They were actually very minor, which was great. But, but with those, I think we may be shifting our catch basin to the entrance-only driveway a little bit closer to Pepper Street, just to kind of further reduce some of the runoff onto the road. And we also were probably going to be incorporating a level spreader to that discharge to just to further dissipate that water before we'll eventually get into that wetland area. And again, that is being treated, you know, prior to that, prior to that discharge in that location.
All right, no, no other questions?
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Gingrich. Mary, could you, actually it might be helpful for us if you go to the, the map that will show us where the actual wetlands line is and where the 100-foot setback is? Or is that right there?
Yeah, I'll point it out on here and then I'll go to the aerial. But it's this, this is the wetlands line here. And then the 100-foot setback line is.
That one.
Right in here.
Okay, so what's the, oh, that's another property, that's a property line, right? Because there's two lots.
Yeah.
The heavy, the low one in the middle? Okay.
Yep, this is the property line.
Okay.
And this better shows it here, I think. Yeah, so, you know, the property line here, this is 571. This is 587. And this is the wetland line here.
Okay. So I have one question about the, the clearing of the curve there for the sight line. Is that going to be a non-ground engagement clearing? Or you're just cutting the trees and, and leaving the rest?
Yeah, so what we're proposing is, and what we did at 500 Pepper Street is to just limb the trees and trim the shrubs down, but not to disturb the vegetation at the ground level.
Right, and then it's just that becomes a maintenance item from there, right?
Right, so, yeah, again, this is 500 Pepper. And for this drive here, we kind of did that in this area to allow for site distance without disturbing the wetlands.
All right, thank you, that's all. Commissioner Masaraco?
No questions at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall.
Yes, on that chart number 2.21 that you had up before. Just to kind of get oriented here. That's a warehouse in the back. And then I assume those are truck bays that are lined up across through there?
Yeah, there are five truck bays on the front here.
And at the very end, is that, is that a truck bay at the very? Oh, I see where they are. I can see down.
Yep.
So, so just to be, just to provide some clarity, those are actually just overhead doors. Those aren't loading docks. There's only one loading dock to kind of serve the entire facility, which is towards the front of the site in that location where Mary's showing there. Along that wetland edge are actually just overhead doors to allow for, you know, FedEx trucks and things like that and box trucks to just access those spaces. But there's only one loading dock, which has been designed to kind of accommodate the entire facility.
Okay, well, that, that answers the only question I had right now. Okay. Kevin, a little more clarity, the drain in the loading dock, does that go into the, the underground system? Or is that got its own thing?
So that drains, so that drains, there's a, there's a catch basin in the, in the depressed dock area. That drains out towards Pepper Street, towards the catch basin along Pepper and then runs along the front of the property and is routed through a hydrodynamic separator prior to getting discharged to the.
There's three catch basins on that system?
Correct.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Spence?
Excuse me. Did you do any test pits for the stormwater basin?
We did. We conducted test pits.
I didn't see the results. Did you, did you, are they on the sheet? Because I missed them if they're here.
Yeah, I believe they should be shown on sheet 2.21. And also in our utility plan as well. We tried to, obviously, we know those are one things that Scott looks for. So at this point, we, it's well drilled into our, our memories to know that we have to make sure we have to go do those to satisfy his requirement because he will ask for them. So.
Good, okay.
We did do those in both underground and above-ground detention areas.
All righty. Would it be possible to shorten the outlet pipe or to change its direction from the stormwater basin? Now I'm on sheet 2.2. Shorten that outlet pipe or change its direction more to the south? To the east, I guess. You've got the level spreader going into the wetlands. And with the, with the contours that you've got there, it looks like it might not be necessary to have it that long. So I was trying to pull the whole gashmear out of the wetland.
I think we could certainly look at that and try to pull that a little bit further. And I, I will say, I think that's probably a drafting error. You know, we, the outlet for that, we would be pulling that back. We wouldn't be looking to have any direct impact for that. So we can certainly look at pulling that back and making sure that's a little bit further away. So there's a little bit more of a buffer.
Now, you're going to laugh at this.
Never.
Yeah. I know you're always teasing me about my mulch burms. But now I'm actually going to ask you to not use them. But you have silt fence, I believe, and it's to be backed by mulch burms? Is that what you're doing?
Yes, that's correct. I think I believe that's what's shown on our SEC plan. Mary, if you could pull that up?
I guess it's a secondary defense there. It's fine. I'm concerned now because Monroe is being taken over by jumping worms. And they can lower, they can actually eat a mulch berm so that it'll be gone within six months. So its effectiveness would be completely nil if there are worms on the property, which there probably are because they're everywhere else in Monroe. So I was just going to suggest that we use something that's a little bit more secure to make sure that your ENS controls stay solid. Wouldn't want your mulch to disappear in a matter of months.
So what would that be?
Hmm?
So what would that be?
I guess silt fence is either more silt fence or, I don't know, something else that isn't edible.
All the other things, hay bales and its, and its compost socks and its chip worms.
I know, I know. We're, well, I just want him to have a solid ENS plan. That's all. I mean, he's got one. But the mulch worms, I'm afraid with the new development of these stupid worms.
Everything else is compost, is compost, is compost, I can't talk.
Postable?
Not postable, right? Did I say that right?
Yeah, I know, but they eat it so fast that it would, it would serve no purpose.
Straw, there's mulch and there's wood chip.
And they would eat all of it.
Your product is going to take longer to get eaten. So that's wood chip.
Well, I think, I think one of the things that we can do, which, which is a good thing, you know, but by incorporating the mulch berm is more of like a secondary treatment behind the silt fence. I think the silt fence provides that primary. And as we said, that mulch berm is almost like a, like a belt and suspenders type approach. So I think what we can do is, I understand the concern about them being eaten. I haven't seen that yet. So I'm actually really excited to maybe stumble upon that. Not that I want the jumping worms to be prevalent anywhere, but I'd be curious to see how fast that happens. But the, the good news is, I think we'll be able to provide inspections during the construction activity so that if we start to observe anything like that, we can make sure that that, any areas can get, you know, backfilled with additional silt fence, maybe a second row. And maybe we can add some notes to our plan to indicate that, that if, you know, if during construction, the mulch burns deteriorate to a point where they're no longer serving that purpose, we can, we can add some additional silt fence in select locations as required.
Okay.
Kevin, it's not, it's not, this is relatively a flat site already, right?
Well, it actually, you can see on this plan, because it shows the existing contours, there's, the majority of the site is level, you're correct. But it does drop off around that perimeter. And we, we did our best to stay within those limits, but we, we did have to push a little bit to accommodate some of the, some of the areas. So we do have some filled to place, but for the most part, yes, we are generally within the area that's relatively flat. So it's really kind of at the bottom of that slope where those wetlands exist, which is where we're establishing all these perimeter measures.
Right.
Looking through your landscape plan.
So let's just clarify. Do you want to see them make a change or you want to?
No, I, what Kevin said, be fine. They'll monitor, they'll upgrade as, as necessary. And that, that's fine. I guess my next question is for Mary. And that is, I was looking at the planting plan. And I was wondering if we could replace the green giant, non-native. What are they? The green giant, thanks. There they are. The green giant arviti with something that's native. A suggestion that was made to be eastern red cedar or if would that.
I like, yeah, I like the eastern red cedar. I think that would, we have plenty of room here. So I think that would be a good choice. We can swap that out.
Okay. And how about for the Mugo pine?
Yeah, and I think we can swap those to, you know, I was just trying to do a variety of evergreens. The main place that we have those is around the base of the light poles. But I can certainly find an alternative native evergreen to incorporate around there.
How much filling is planned for this? Is there none?
You said there's some.
Yeah.
Do you have an import calculation?
Sorry, I don't have that in front of me right now.
I think that's, there should be a table on our grading and drainage plan, Mary. So if you can pull that submitted plan up. if you can pull that submitted plan up.
Yeah, so total fill, or net fill is 6,600 cubic yard. So 8,000 cubic yards of cut and 2,000 cubic yards of fill.
That was import of 2,000, 6,000 cut, and 2,000 coming in, is that what you said?
Yeah, 8,000 cut and 2,000 coming in.
So the total is 10,000 yards?
No, no, sorry, 6,000 net.
Oh, there it is, it's on 2.21.
Yeah, at the top there, so.
Okay, any blasting?
Not anticipated, you know, if we come to some ledge, we, none of the test pits do we hit ledge or anything.
Would it be possible, and I don't know that it would or not, you went into a pretty detailed description, for the driveways, if they were moved together closer in this, more toward the center, would, would it require less cut of the edge of the wetland for sightline?
It, it was really, you know, to get a safe truck turning movement in is why we have the entrance only here, on this, on this side. So we did look at just having one driveway, but, you know, and for safe truck movements, this was the, the best option for that.
I guess I don't completely understand truck traffic.
Yeah, they need a larger radius to turn into the site.
Okay, I think that was all the questions that I had, thank you.
I want to have Mary substitute something right now for the mugo pines, because-
Oh yeah, that would be great.
I'll see, we have a lot of things-
Yeah, we can do alecs glabra, I think that would be-
Is that a native?
Yeah.
Alex, what was the name?
Alecs glabra.
Alecs glabra, inkberry.
Oh, inkberry, okay, okay, that would be, that would be super, is there any value to increasing the amount of large shade trees anywhere along the driveway and the pavement? I've been seeing a lot of destruction of asphalt and buildings, now the buildings would be an issue here, by Japanese knotweed, that takes, that takes hold pretty well, and next thing you know, you can't get rid of it, and it's in the middle of your driveway, and you can't get it out, so would shade trees be of any value in helping to shade out and make drought out, that could be introduced?
It's something to consider, and we, you know, we may, I know Scott gave us some comments about potentially turning this striped island into a landscape island, but if, as you can tell from 500 Pepper, the applicant really is pretty vigilant on maintaining his property, so I don't really anticipate, you know, that getting out of control with-
There's no place for it to plant, they, she got a septic in the front, she got the line of-
No, I'm talking about the edges, on, on the outside edges of the driveway, along the, along the, yeah, wetland there.
Along the wetland.
At the base of the slope and that kind of thing, I know there are trees in the wetland, but that's a good 40, 40 feet away from the base, oh, slope, I think.
Yeah, yeah, there's a canopy, so I don't, you know, I'd want them to get shade out, so we did mostly under story along the edge of that canopy.
Okay, all right, that's it for my questions, then, thank you.
So I think that was everybody, right, did I get everybody? Let me, um, do you want to read a exhibit?
Exhibit one were the mailing receipts and photo of the sign of the property, exhibit two is health department comments, exhibit three is the town engineering review comments, and exhibit four was the bond estimate form from the town engineer.
Right, and there's no other pending items that were waiting for anything right here?
Um, I don't-
You have, so all the, all the engineering, town engineer responded?
Um, well, he, Mary, you got those today, right?
Yeah, this morning we got, he had three comments.
Right, so those are the ones that I gave you, he had three comments, and the bond estimate was $29,000.
Right, so we'll open up the public comment, if anybody here would like to speak in favor of this application? Can you close the screen?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Where do I?
Ma'am? Anybody in the public here to speak in, in favor of this application? Anybody in the public here to speak in opposition to this application? Is anybody in the public that I hear to speak about this application in a general nature?
Good evening, panel, my name's Fred Engelman, also Mary and Kevin, good evening, I own the property, I guess southeast of that 565 Pepper, adjacent to, I'd just like to say, I think, I think it's a good thing, I seen that 501, they did a great job on landscaping and providing adequate detail to that, the only, it's not a concern, the only thing that I would ask is, obviously, they're gonna do the, sorry, I'm assuming they did an E2, but I noticed when they did the call before you dig, call before you dig is over property line, so when they do the sightline for that second driveway, just ask them to, you know, be vigilant of that property line, and I understand there has to be trimming of the trees for the sightline, so I just ask that they be respectful for the, for the trees.
Okay, in what's, in regards to, you're talking about when they clear it for the sightline?
For the, for the, for that, for that second driveway, for the out, for the out and the in driveway.
Right, so you think that it's close to your property, is that where you're-
I, it, no, again, they're following their setback, when they came to do their preliminary test totals, when they did the markings for call before you dig, it's quite a ways over the property line.
Right.
So I just want to make sure that the property lines, you know, again, that they have that, and judging, judging from their math, it looks like they do, just maybe somebody that's technical out in the field didn't see that, but again, I would ask, just ask that, again, they, you know, review that and make sure they're on their, you know, make sure it's on, on, on the right side.
Okay.
To answer your question about the traffic there in the other driveway, I can say this from experience, the trucks are gonna, not that they're gonna have an issue, but people come flying around that corner, obviously not now because it's under construction and that, but once that's all paved, people come flying around that corner, so the guys coming in there will definitely, you know, there will be a challenge, so if you ask them to really shrink it down, the trucks pulling in are gonna sit out on Pepper Street a little bit longer.
So you're saying that the way they have it placed is a good thing?
It is a good thing.
Okay.
Because again, and again, and again, I'm just adding that, I'm not saying, you know, I'm just giving that, because again, that's, they're right on that corner, and I, and I do notice, you know, the cars flying around, so again, you know, as far as that, you know, if I can add a little bit to that.
Okay.
Okay, but I think, again, I think it's a good thing, I seen what they did down the street, they definitely improved, you know, the, you know, makeup of Pepper Street, and, and the guy is very vigilant in, in doing his plantings, so, yeah, that's, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we can move this, right?
We can move it to enclose the hearing and-
Yeah, motion to close this hearing, move it to deliberation.
Well, do they have to address, I did read the exhibits, so there were three comments with, do you, Mary, do you need to submit new plans to address Scott's comments?
Um, yeah, we can, we can submit revisions that, that address all his comments.
Or do you want that to just be part of the-
Are they innocuous things?
I have it in front of you, I have, it's the one that says exhibit-
Only three, right.
Yeah, there are only three, but I don't have the technical skill to determine that, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, we can-
Would they be done by the time of the next meeting, when we have the draft approval? If we have the draft approval?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, Mary, they could be done by, by that?
Sightline profile.
I mean, do you want to see those, or do you want to just incorporate the engineering comments into the-
Most of these things that come through Scott that are the technical stuff usually doesn't really, once Scott's happy with it, we're happy, so I don't think we've ever looked at anything that Scott had changed on a plan and then scrutinized.
I, no, I wasn't saying that, I'm just wanting to ask, do you want to see the changes before you make a decision, or are you comfortable in just saying that the engineering comments be addressed as part of the approval?
Yeah, I think we could do that.
Okay, all right, so that doesn't, okay, all right, I just was looking for that clarification.
So I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and move it to deliberation?
Move to-
I make the motion that we close the public hearing and move it to deliberation.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Spence, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, this public hearing is closed and moved to deliberation, moving along, it'll be discussion, nothing remediation permissions, nothing application hearing determination, none, bodily reduction reports, none, time extension, none, discussion, deliberation session, deliberation, I can appeal to hearings, I would like to just move that to the, to the end, so I can, so I can, I'm recused.
Okay, do you want to address the other two hearings?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'll be here for that, but I'm just saying, it's, it's, we're in a deliberation session, but, and there, there's nothing else that's, that's heavy on the agenda.
Correct. Um-
So let's do, uh-
Will we have a quorum? Yes, we still have a quorum.
Yeah, let me just, let me finish, finish out the agenda, then go back to it for the, right, so, do we want to cover Joe's issues?
Yeah, we'll get to, that's, we'll do that right before the minutes, okay, we've got status updates. Okay, so IWC agent activity reports, agent approvals, IA 2021-24, 40 wind throughout place, true removal and trimming, IA 2021-25, 283 Guinea road generator, IA 2021-26, 615 Monroe turnpike shed, 14 permitted uses as a right, IPU 2018-01, Department of Public Works, road repair, replacement, general maintenance, IW regulations, section 4.2C, expires 3/28/2023, enforcement deliberations, no public input, 15 deliberations on completed remediation permissions or items from this agenda, none, admission, administrative review, enforcement issues, none, status updates, we have a letter from Joe Chapman, we, we just want to-
Talk about here, is there any feelings?
Um, do you want me to read it, or do you want to read it?
I think, on his 112 Elm Street, is not 118 Elm Street?
Oh, it probably is.
Clarify that.
I think they were the two properties together.
Right, they're both subdivided.
So maybe he was considering it as-
This is clearly the one we've been talking about, though, with the outhouse and fire pit, being built.
Yeah, that's what I did with my paper.
Joe, yeah?
Yeah, JC on top, I guess, oh, thank you.
Yeah, hugs.
This one a Guinea road, though, this is the one that had the, the, we were waiting on language for the, isn't that the one we're waiting on the language for the conservation easement?
Yeah.
We were, and, but, yeah.
It was supposed to be for an attorney, yeah, and then in the process, in, in that time period that the property was sold.
Right.
So somebody else now owns that problem.
Right.
And if it wasn't-
They remediate it, they didn't remediate it?
Um, I, I'm 100% sure they did not.
Oh.
Because they weren't doing anything until they had the language.
They got that considered in their purchase price. Um, so that's no longer our issue?
Oh, yeah, it's still our issue, yeah, until it gets resolved.
It's part of the land record, it's part of the land, not the owner.
We'd need to be getting a new agent, a full-time agent, the sometime-
Let's see here, let's, um- Then 138, just, you know, the 1381, obviously, they got a new attorney.
Right.
So does that mean someone, that feed door got replaced?
No, she's still there, but the other property, I guess, finally got someone assigned to it.
And then obviously, there's the corn nursery situation, Joe, are you here, you want to just, if there's anything else on this letter that you want to just clarify, or just run it through real quick, and?
Sure, I, I did speak to John Epofano, who's the manager up there, I've been to the site, it's, after that rain event we had, I think it was Ira, Irene, I can't remember the name of that hurricane, but whatever came through here, we had that, you know, six or seven inches worth of water dumped on there, I was surprised to find out how little actually happened out there, it seemed to, between the, the bald trees that are there and the plantings, and the mulch that's down, or the wood chips that are down, and the rock line channel that they provided, it sucked like parallel to the, to the street there, there was no evidence I saw of any erosion or any kind of really debris being washed out of the property down lower, so I was surprised, and pleasantly surprised to find out that it really was, it's really quite stable out there, place still looks good, it looks great for the street, but certainly looks a lot better than what we had there before, they have cleaned up virtually everything that's out there, and obviously, it's in their best interest to do so, because they want to utilize the property as much as possible, so they've gotten rid of all of the, it's kind of like, oh, so the garbage is gone, and debris is gone, that type of thing, I, you know, stop by there, or I drive by once in a while, take a quick look at things, and certainly I've been in contact with, with the, with the site manager out there, at this point, I don't know what our options would be to, for some kind of a change out there, I think they've probably done about as good as we could expect, I think clearly what we looked at initially was that they overstepped or overreached in their interpretation of what they were allowed to do, but at this point, it's done, and I-
Oh, but they're, but, but they're also continuing to operate in that area.
That's correct, yes, yeah.
We don't have, we haven't, have we, and we haven't determined anything as far as rights, you know, their, their right to do so, correct, at this point?
Um, the conversations I've had-
Do you not want to pursue this anymore, and just say they got farm status and just let it go?
No, it's farm status has nothing to do with it.
Well, it does, actually.
Give them just different, give them different abilities.
But does, I thought the specific issue was that they were planting these bald trees in the wetlands to be removed and sold?
No, I think they're stored, I think, Joe, the, the tree, the trees in the wetlands are, are already dug up in, in, in containers or ball and burlap, and they're just being stored there, right?
That is correct.
Okay, right, so they're not doing ground engagement, they're just, they're just storing there and, and, and driving into it and out, so, I think I've seen this before, because I've been to a ton of different nurseries, but again, their interpretation is, they're doing their thing, and we've, our stand, our, I think our position at this point is that, where's the language, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, I wouldn't say we're gonna put this thing to rest, I still think that someone should come in here and explain it to us, so that, especially if it comes up again- I still think that someone should come in here and explain it to us so that, especially if it comes up again, we understand, I mean, we're not the Farm Bureau.
I thought that's what we asked, that they come in.
They're supposed to, before they do any significant work on a wetland, they're supposed to come in to us and ask what is allowable by, by non-permitted, I mean, by non-regulated use and what needs a permit. Clearcutting can be done, but it requires a permit first.
And, and they did come to us and ask that question and then they withdrew their.
They withdrew and.
And went and did it anyway.
That's the issue.
Right.
It's just that they didn't come for a jurisdictional ruling.
Right.
And that's what they're supposed to do. Chances are they would get it, you know, with no trouble, but the problem is that's what everybody, you know, we set a precedent, one guy does it and then, you know, every nursery.
As of right now, the only thing that I think that they're, they've done is they've maybe cut down some trees and they've.
They clear cut, and they're not clear cut.
And that is, you know, that's easily restorable. So, you know, it's not like we're dealing with a.
But that's where they got the bald, the bald trees are where they clear cut, so they're using it as part of their.
Yeah, their stock area.
Right, right.
It's, it's a moot issue, I think, at this point. I just hope it doesn't happen to us.
Forget about it?
I don't know what else we can do. Really, think about it, you're wasting everybody's time, what are we going to do?
I mean, I think we can leave it where it sits right now and continue to request them to come in and explain it to us. I think we deserve that.
Oh, Joe.
I don't, I don't think they'd have a problem doing that. As a matter of fact, I know they would.
That's all we're, that's all we need. Now we need to come and say, look, this is the regulation, we interpreted it this way. You know, hey, maybe they have, you know, maybe the Farm Bureau's got, you know, a decision or something or some other cases. That's all, they're just, we just want to know, you know, we just want to know that they didn't just come in here and say, oh, jeez, you know what? Let's just do the whole, what is it? It's easier to ask for forgiveness than permission type of thing.
Yeah, I think it'd be better to get closure rather than just to let it go.
Right, put it to rest, tell us, you know, explain to us what, what they, what they discovered. And if they knew what, I say what they, if they withdrew with proper information and, you know, that, that was their right to do that, they, they may have determined that, hey, you know what? These things, regulations are, are, don't require us what we want to do, we don't have to get any permission. So they save themselves from trouble, but the fact that they came here and then withdrew kind of just.
Now, either way, they were supposed to have come here, you, they, they are not allowed to read our regulations and make that determination.
Farm thing works, or whatever they have, nursery rights, I don't know all of that at all, so.
Well, I've had three hours classes on that, so.
Want to just, I think we've said this in the past, you know, we're requesting that they come to us and just explain to us the situation.
Sounds good.
Not an application, just come here, say, you know, this is what we're doing, this is what we determined, this is the language that we went with, or, or maybe their attorney gave them some kind of advice, you know, anything like that.
Okay, so what, is, would that work for you, for everybody for the next meeting then?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Joe, before you go. At the 112, 1 slash 118 Elm Street. When we last left that as a commission, we asked for, not a, not an NOV letter, but a citation. We voted to move it to citation.
Yeah, part of the problem we're having is actually contacting anybody. So.
Because we've already done the NOV, NOV is already on, in place.
Right.
We've been, we've had that going for quite a while now, that's why we want to move it to citation and that puts the legal.
Yeah, I think it has to at this point. I mean, again, someone who came to us, made it sound like he was going to do all the right things and then he stopped coming. So.
Okay, then we can, I'll send a citation on and see what happens out of that.
All right, so I think we're.
If we send a citation, that means that you've got to have a, a hearing.
Then I think he's got 10.
How about we do that?
10 days, right, and.
10, 10, four days.
How about we just do a referral to planning and zoning that there's, that there's, there's a violation on this property and that if it has to be dealt with, it will have to be dealt with before any type of building permits are issued.
Well, that's the same as putting it in the land records.
Joe, has anybody, has any other departments issued violations against this property?
No, not, not at this, not yet, but would, you know, for as far as a zoning standpoint, that's also in the process.
See, we're supposed to have our own, though, I mean, we're not supposed to, you know, push it off.
And it's probably got to, before they get a building permit, they probably got to come to us anyways, right? Because the whole.
I don't think they're getting a building permit.
They're a vacation home.
It's got an outhouse, what, what do you want, right?
Well, that's a lot, that's, you know, there's not a lake there, so I can't see why we'd spend the money on a lot and not build anything out of it. But hey, who knows?
Yeah, it's just, it might be that little piece of land back there.
I need clarification, so what do you want done? Hold it or?
Well, if you think that doing the citation is, is going to be kind of like a difficult thing.
I just might hold off until.
Violation on the, the violation, you have to act on an NOV at any certain time, right?
No, citations have limits.
Right.
Make a, just, just, Joe, make a referral to planning and zoning and health. Too, because there's, there's maybe an outhouse there.
Yep.
Right, so.
That's a public health thing.
Yeah, health and, and planning and zoning. And then we just, you know, just, we'll just sit on our thing as a pending for however long until someone sells it or wants to develop it, who knows?
Yeah, I mean, at this point, I'm actually, I'm actually trying to fire a shot across the bow and get somebody's attention out there.
Right.
So unless I have to drive by and see somebody there.
Been almost a year, I think, since the last time we heard of the guy.
Yeah.
So.
I have one other address, I'd like to make sure we get on the list to track, and that's 1388 Monroe Turnpike.
That's right.
The clearing of the wetland, clear, you clear cut the wetland. Joe had been out there and I, what's the status on that one, Joe?
That was still, I, the last time I spoke to the owner was at the last, was actually right before the last meeting. And he said that he would get a soil scientist out there to flag, you know, if there were or what there was to wetlands. So I have not heard back from the guy yet, I'll contact him again and find out what the status of our request to have it flagged is and then we'll take it from there.
Yeah, hopefully get a status update for the next meeting.
Yep, that's fine.
Right.
Yep.
We just want to keep it on the list then. Anything else? Nothing for me?
I thought you were going to.
Depending on, in a minute. August 25th, 2021.
Okay, did everybody get their, in their email? The, yeah, and they were up. They're up on the website now, yeah.
Are they good?
Hold on, getting buzzed here, turn that off. Did anybody see anything that they were not happy with on it? Did anybody read it?
I read it, but I was comfortable enough, I didn't print it, so that's usually a good sign. Cross out.
Okay. So.
So this, this one that I gave you is the one stolen.
Want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the, the draft that was in your mailboxes.
Yes, correct.
I second. I say a motion to approve the August 25th, 21 minutes from Commissioner Spence, the second by Commissioner Hall, favor. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, where's Clark?
Oh, God, all right, I don't.
No, Ross is there, we got four, it's okay.
Is that?
Ross just gave us a thumbs up.
I saw that, but I didn't know if you'd like, all right, so what did we say about the present commissioner, it didn't vote? Want to abstain?
Now, for minutes, I don't think it matters, this thing, we don't take a record.
Pass unanimously. Okay.
Do we?
Good. Minutes of September 8th, 2021.
Okay, these also were in your mailbox?
Good for me.
So you want to make a motion? You want to make a motion, DJ?
Oh, yes, I make a motion, we accept the minutes for September 8th.
Motion from Commissioner Hall to accept the minutes, number 8th, 2021, second.
Aye. Bye.
Second, Commissioner Spence, all in favor? Aye. Aye, motion passing unanimously. Minutes Regulation Committee.
No.
Regard Committee? Nope. Response. I think that was it, I think more stuff very talked about. Well, you guys also have, do you guys also do anything on the bond release?
Not on the agenda.
For me?
Bond release here on pending items.
Oh, no, because I haven't, he hasn't done anything.
I just want to know because then, obviously I would not be here for that either.
Right, right, yeah.
Okay, so deliberation session. Yeah, we close two tonight, right?
Yes, you have.
71 Main Street.
Correct.
1271 Main Street, let's do this officially. IWC 2021-29, 1271 Monroe Turnpike, sorry, Monroe Turnpike, Monica, Detective Development Associates, site improvements.
I move that we direct staff to draft a letter of approval.
We got a second, that was motion by Commissioner Spence, second by Commissioner Hall, favor.
Well, wait, let's see, do we need to put any conditions on it?
I didn't think, they handled everything.
I think they did too, but I wanted to ask everybody if there was any condition.
Anybody have any conditions that they want to express on this? Nothing.
I think the changes they made in that letter they sent us covered everything, so.
Okay.
Plans look.
1271?
Yes.
And who made the motion, I'm sorry, for the draft?
I did.
Commissioner Spence, second by Commissioner Hall. We're going to vote, ready to vote?
Uh, no, we don't vote.
We have to prove it.
Actually.
Yeah, well, you can vote for the draft.
To prove the.
No, but you can, you can, you can make a motion just to.
Everybody.
Draft up the letter.
We use motion.
Yes, I know I did.
Let's vote on it, so all in favor of drafting a letter of, of, of approval? Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye, we got it from, all right, so motion passing unanimously. Now we're on to.
Include monitoring, right?
We're on to 571 and 587 Pepper Street, IWC 2021-12, proposed construction of 6,814 plus square foot office and 22,000 plus square foot warehouse built with a sorrier grading, driveway, parking, utility facility and underground detention systems, Maybrook LLC, applicant solely engineering LLC representative. I think we handled everything in that one too, right?
No, well, we did handle it, but we, we have to.
So we have.
We don't have them on a plan.
By the time we have, by the next meeting, Mary will, will substitute the plants and Scott's.
Well, no, you said you didn't need to see, Mary wasn't going to resubmit because you said you didn't need.
Well, they're going to, they have to refu, the Scott's, deal with Scott's comments?
That's what I asked and you guys.
No, we said we could make it part of the approval.
Right.
Address, well, all, that's a condition. That all of the town engineers' comments be addressed.
And the plans are changed.
And the plans are changed.
Because now.
Oh, right, okay, so, but we won't, yes, so we can make that as a condition.
It's a condition, right. All right, so we have a couple of conditions.
So engineering comments. Are. And then, do you want specifics on the planting or what?
Well, I would just say, as.
Do you want to start a motion first?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, no, this would be a letter of approval, including the following conditions.
Draft a letter of approval.
I make a motion to draft a letter of approval.
Okay.
Conditions?
With conditions, right, okay, so you have a motion from Commissioner Hall to draft a letter of approval with conditions. You have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Spence, let's spell out the conditions.
Okay. So planting wise, we were going to switch the green giant Arviti with red cedar.
Okay.
And replace the Mugo pines with hink berry.
Ilex galbrae.
Galbrae, Mugo?
Ilex is the, is the, is the Latin name or the standable name, Ilex galbrae, I think it's G L A B R A.
Oh, okay, I know there's a whole bunch of Ilexes and I don't know which ones which.
All right, well, I don't know how to spell any of that, so feel free to.
G L A B R A, Ilex, I L E X.
I L E X.
G L A. G L A B R A.
G L A. So replace Ilex galbrae or?
Put the Mugo pine, Mugo pine is being replaced.
Mugo pines are being replaced with.
Okay.
The Ilex. As agreed to. M U G O, Mugo pine, Mugo, Mugo, where we pronounce it, replace with tomato, tomato.
Galbrae, okay.
Engineers' comments.
Yeah.
To be addressed and to shorten the outlet pipe or redirect to pull everything out of the wetlands.
Okay, so. That particular item, he said he was going to see if he could.
No, he said he was.
Oh, he did, you sure?
Yeah, he said he was because he said he, he thought that was a drafting error.
Oh.
And that they would normally not have direct impact if they didn't have.
Oh, yeah, yeah, he did say that.
Away from the wetlands.
Yeah, just pulling it out, so.
Out of the wet.
Pulling out of the wetlands.
Shorten the pipe out of wetlands.
And that was all I had for conditions and then, of course, the standard conditions.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, right? All in favor of this draft, uh, motion with changes? Aye?
Aye.
My motion passing unanimously. All right, so I think I'm out now.
Okay. Beating. Yeah, I'll take it. Glad to see you're better. I'm sorry?
About April 10, 36th.
Yeah, we're not done yet.
What do you do next?
Next, I'm just, because I'm recused, I'm just. I'll leave now because there's nothing else for me to.
Yep, you're on and that's the end.
All right, good night, everybody.
Good night, Keith.
Thank you.
So everybody should have had their draft approvals.
Yes, let me still put myself together here.
Yeah.
Okay, our next. Last thing on the.
It started.
Last thing on the, on the agenda, exactly.
Item F number 12.
Thank you, because I was looking for it. Okay, deliberation on the completed draft for IWC 2021-11, 10 and 36 Main Street excavation and fill application to prepare property for future site development. We have a draft. Any of our commissioners have any comments on the draft?
Did, hopefully everyone reviewed the, there was very few conditions.
There were, there was only one that I, I had written down on my paper as Jim had requested, reverse slope benches. And they said that was okay. Kevin, Kevin agreed to it, but it was not on a plan.
All right.
So the reverse slope benches.
Oh, that's right.
So that should be.
As offered.
C, right?
Yes.
Okay. So item C. Reverse slope benches? Is that what it is?
Yeah. I'm not sure if it's plural, benches or just one bench, but whatever it is, I think it covers.
And that's something that they would put on the map?
Yes, they would normally put that on the map.
Okay.
And the other thing is, there's a minor typo on page one. The third whereas, the second line, it starts with hearing which opened and adjourned.
Thank you.
What?
Find them.
Well, I need them.
I would rather too, but I missed it.
I'm an English, I'm an English person, so this is what I, this is what I do, one of the many. I just have a question for you, Donna. It might be that I've never noticed this before in any other. It might be that I've never noticed this before in any other approval. On page three, under number two is a permit, note that in some cases said permit, permit may essentially be the final accepted drawing stamp signed and dated. Is that what we always have?
Yes.
It is, okay.
Um, uh, there was no bond with this?
Oh, man, tell me you didn't put a bond. Scott has a, Scott must have had one. Oh, bond estimate form, here we go.
Wait, is that for that one?
Yeah, 1036.
Okay.
Um, 212, 850.
How much?
212, 850.
Okay.
Do you have that, Don, do you want this?
I, I, uh.
I don't need this, so if you want it, you're welcome to it.
Okay. Oh, yes, yes, yes. So that's what it is, on September 22nd, he, the, uh, 22,000 is what there was for the wetlands. That's what it says.
Oh, wait a minute, where, where are you looking at that?